Next speaker is Doris Edwards. Could we have the overhead, please?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Doris Edwards. I’m a community activist in East Gainesville, actually all of Gainesville. And I have a major concern. I know today we just stood up and did a pledge allegiance to the flag. And at the end it says liberty and justice for all. And every one of you stood up and held your hand over your heart and said that. But what I’m seeing here is a lot of injustice instead. For right now, the situation is about the mayor’s assistant. When the mayor was elected or appointed, whichever it was, he brought with him his own campaign manager and created a position for that person. And the citizens of Gainesville, including myself, thought, okay, well, this is temporary. They said it’s temporary, so maybe it’s not such a bad thing. Even though I know the city of Gainesville actually has a setup and have very qualified clerical secretaries and others that can do whatever the mayor or anyone else on this panel needs done. But, okay, something new, something different. So they brought him in and they said it was going to be temporary. So the citizens sort of just stood back, didn’t do very much about it. Because we thought temporary means, there’s a clause for sure that says, maybe three months, four months, there’s some timeframe there. But of course, we never saw the letter, so we never knew. But temporary really is full-time and permanent.
Actually, ma’am, if you look at the letter, it clearly says-
Please let me finish.
I’ll give you extra time, but it clearly says temporary.
Thank you. And this letter, so what has happened now, after this long time, this position has been changed, the title has been changed. There’s been a big raise, $22 an hour, point something an hour, over $40,000 a year. It still says temporary, which I’m sure is there for a reason, to help people get through a loophole. And the job still has not been advertised. Okay? You’re taking me back to segregated days, when the good old boys used to bring their friends in and give them jobs. That’s exactly what we’re doing in 2012 by doing this letter and using this particular process. There are a lot of citizens or employees here that are more deserving of what your assistant is getting. $40,000 could be distributed among the qualified secretaries and clerks here at the city of Gainesville. It’s my money, okay? You work for me, I don’t work for you. And we need to tell you what to do with the money, not you tell us what you’re going to do with the money. How do we correct this? Because an injustice has been done. The position needs to be closed. If not, then it needs to be investigated. We need to start over again. If you’re going to open this position, open it and interview for it. And if your assistant wants to interview for it, that’s fine. Stick with due process.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Debbie Martinez. Actually, excuse me. That is not in order. Yes, Ms. Martinez, please come forward.
Mayor Commissioners, my name is Debbie Martinez. Blowback from black community members when Mayor Lowe hires campaign manager without advertising the job is not a surprise. Insiders should not be getting preferential treatment. It is wrong. You need to do the right thing. This is not fair. It looks bad when Mayor Lowe hires his campaign manager as his personal policy and research assistant, three months after he narrowly wins his runoff election in 2010. How many of Mayor Lowe’s campaign workers received job offers? In November of 2010, Commissioner Donovan argued that Mayor Lowe’s policy aide hire created an uneven playing field for the mayor and the six commissioners who have equal policymaking authority under the city’s charter. Now the mayor has unfair advantage over the other commissioners. This young 23-year-old aide, Garrett Garner, has been given an increase in pay with generous health care and other benefits. This is totally unethical. This is one of the many reasons why residents want Mayor Lowe to resign. If the commission is so uninformed to give the mayor an unfair advantage over policymaking, you could at least do the right thing and advertise the position. East Gainesville residents need jobs, not Mayor Lowe’s campaign workers. Who were the three commissioners who voted to give the mayor this unethical authority to hire his personal aide? Where was the equal employment officer during the original hire back in 2010 and the recent rehire last November? East Gainesville and all residents deserve to have answers to four questions. Number one, how many applications were submitted for this position? Number two, when were they interviewed? Number three, was his personal policy aide to the mayor position advertised? And number four, and when did the equal employment officer sign off on this new hire? The recent rehire of Mayor Lowe’s personal policy aide, giving him a pay increase to $22 an hour with generous benefits without advertising the position is unfair. This is a glaring example of why so many citizens want Mayor Lowe to resign. And now I tend to agree with them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Juanita Miles Hamilton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners. Mr. Means had to leave for another engagement, and he is the chair of the Duval Heights Front Porch Florida Incorporated. This, my talk is about the hiring of your then research assistant that was later placed into the position of a mayoral aide into a temporary, time-limited position. It is not about who, it’s not about when, it’s not about where. For Garrett is a fine young man. It’s about the process, Mr. Mayor, which is unfair and unheard of in government character. As my parents have always told me, that it’s not what you do in the presence of folk, but it’s what you do when no one’s watching. And I believe that. I live in northeast, which is mostly poverty-driven area within the city. And we would like to see all people given a chance to strive economically. Front Porch, the Racket House, and many other organizations work with youth daily, teaching them how to write resumes, how to do public speaking, how to interview, etiquette, and many other job training skills, as you are aware of that, because you got to meet some of the children. We get many calls asking about employment. And most of the time, we have to say, we just don’t have any, even after the training. Dr. Martin Luther King stated, “Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter.” This situation matters, Mr. Mayor, because of the process. The process. It was not competitive, allowing all applicants to apply, as I clearly am aware of, because I’ve hired many thousands of employees, from permanent to temporary to contractual, with the city of Gainesville. And the benefits that’s outlined in this letter from Sandy Bernard, whom I’ve had I worked with through the years, does not constitute any temporary employee. And I would like for you to go back to the drawing board tonight. I’d like to challenge you to do the right thing and treat all employees and people fairly.
Ma’am, your time is ended. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Mario Perez.
I’m here speaking on behalf of him. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I’m here tonight because we have a serious issue. And that issue is fairness. Fairness for the east side, fairness for all those that are unemployed. The hiring of the mayor’s assistant, I was on TV20. I had the reluxury of, apparently someone didn’t like me on that station. Someone didn’t like what I was saying. But I’m gonna tell you something. I’m an honorable person. I believe that we have to move in a direction where we have to be fair. We have to stop having our cliques. We have to make sure that every person that applies for a job, that it goes through the correct due process, and that we carry the Constitution of the United States, which means everybody has a right to apply for a job, no matter who they are, and make it fair. Tonight, I challenge our mayor, the one we elected, the one we brought in office, the one we said, “Look, we’re hiring you to work for us. We’re giving you the duties and the responsibilities to make sure that everything that we need as citizens is met.” And people that are struggling, $22 an hour is an outrage. I don’t make that with my job, and I work every day. I’m a single man. I work very hard. I struggle for everything I get. God has blessed me. But to see that, it is a disgrace. It is disrespect to those city workers that work hard every day. Is it a disrespect for those that have been here for many years, that have not gotten a raise? The bus drivers that are struggling, the unions that are fighting, fighting back and forth, suing one another. We can’t get along. No, that hasn’t changed. And it starts with tonight, with the mayor’s assistant saying, “We need to reevaluate this situation. We need to come together and say, you know what? We were elected to do a job, and this was wrong. When are you gonna stand up? When are you gonna say, ‘I’m not gonna sit here and compromise anymore’? That’s why I’m here tonight. And I know some of you may not like me, some of you may not get along with me, but that’s fine, because I’m comfortable with who I am. Because, Mr. Mayor, I believe that we elected you to lead this city in a prosperous and a fair democracy for every citizen of Gainesville. And by no way, shape, forms, or fashion should anyone be disarmed from the due process. I believe that we need to take this thing, and we need to disarm it, and we need to hire, and look into those that are less fortunate, and do our due diligence. And I just want to say this. Remember that you are public servants. Some of you I watched tonight, it bothered me, because, see, you’re here to serve us. Some of you were looking off, like you didn’t care. You have to start caring for us, because when you leave here, you are going to be judged by a greater one. I can’t judge you. The people out in the audience can’t judge you. The media can’t judge you. But there’s one man that looks high and hangs low. So remember that when you are making decisions for us, no matter how much you click the button, no matter how many minutes I get, when I leave here, I’m gonna be judging. I’m gonna have many minutes with Jesus. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Joe Beatty.
Good evening, Commissioners. I’m Joe Beatty. It’s not fair, Mr. Mayor, for the taxpayers to pay, for the taxpayers to pay for your own aide. It’s a luxury the citizens and taxpayers of Gainesville can’t afford. But it’s even worse. It’s not fair for the process to go down the way it has. And as the speakers before me, I urge you to correct the process. Additionally, I don’t think it’s a good use of taxpayer money for you to have your own aide, when we’re having all sorts of budget crunches in that. But one last point. I heard that City Hall is trying to suppress the news about the hiring of the mayor’s aide. So I asked tonight, very directly, “Mr. Mayor, is it true that you called TV20 and demanded they remove the story about the questionable hiring of your aide? Thank you very much for your time, and thank you tonight. It’s nice to see you looking at me when I speak. I appreciate that very much.”
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Gabriel Hillel.
My name is Gabriel Hillel. I am most troubled by what I’ve heard here tonight. I’ve been speaking for some time, as some of you know, probably dating back certainly to 2001. And what’s frightening to me tonight is how many people have spoken so eloquently to the wrong people. They even forgot or never understood who the right fraud guy is. Everybody’s focused on the people from Commissioner Chase to Commissioner Botcher. That’s not who runs this city. The people who run this city are that end and that end. Who hired Mr. Garrett? The city manager hired Mr. Garrett, and Mayor Lowe said he was the first one to point to the city manager. We have a weak mayor form of government. Commissioners have no power. Yes, they have policy. But you can react, you can act any kind of policy you want. If the city manager doesn’t agree with it, forget about it. Now, you may say, “Well, other cities have city managers too, and they have weak mayor form of governments. Gainesville is unique.” We have a city attorney that was empowered, I’m not faulting Mr. Ratsin, that was empowered when city government came into play to be a charter officer. Mr. Hunziger, a charter officer, knows and is an excellent person with utilities. I asked him two years ago, did he understand what his role as charter officer was? He smiled at me and said he had no idea. He doesn’t. That was Mr. Kurtz’s idea in 1990. If you want to do something, change your city manager. Look at tonight’s agenda, and you’ll find that the city manager and the mayor, I’m sorry, city attorney and the other officials, they’re gonna be evaluated by the commissioners, who will all say, as they always do, that they do a fine job. The person who hired Garrett is the city manager. He hires all of the employees for the city. The city mayor, if he tried to hire somebody, could possibly be removed from office for that alone in this city. I came here tonight, actually, to point out that I wanted to get rid of a silliness in the city charter that has it, that a city-elected official would, could be guilty of a misdemeanor if he or she dares to approach, well, somebody like Ed Reagan. Remember Ed Reagan Day? Ed Reagan was the man who brought you biomass, not Mayor Lowe. Mr. Hunziger could not do it, because he was comparatively new to the city. He was just getting his feet wet there. That was shepherded by an unelected official, Ed Reagan. And we honor him with a day for 33 years of service. Understand what your government did before you complained. That’s the man who’s responsible. That’s the man who’s responsible.
Mr. Hillel, your time is ended. Thank you for your comments. We’ve reached the end of citizen comment time. Got some things to go through. First of all, there was a discussion about the Coppers Festival and the Superfund Arts Project. Mr. Blackburn, the city does not put any funds into this, does it? Is this not all from the EPA as part of the overall Superfund program that they have?
Mr. Mayor, I could give you a more thorough answer with a little bit more research, but the city did, after being requested by a group of residents, perhaps not the same group of residents here tonight from the Coppers area, did sign off on, I believe, on a grant request, at the request of those citizens. There’s no city money as far as local dollars in it. I believe that group did get a grant through EPA for that arts review of the Copper site. And they, you know, that citizens group came up with the idea, they asked that we, that you put in the application for them, allow them to apply for the funds, and they did receive the funds. But they’re no, they’re no local dollars in it.
That’s right. That was, you know, that was really the question. So actually, the city is not funding that. The, then the next item, next item deals with Mr. Delaney’s request with respect to University Village, and the, including that in the area for form-based code. Commissioner Hawkins, is that what your light is on for? Okay. I’ll recognize you then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I’d like us to be responsive to what Mr. Delaney is asking. And my first question is, I don’t, the contract stipulated the area that we were looking at. I met with a consultant, so in other words, we’ve already picked this geographic area and we attached it as an indentment to the contract. I met with a consultant yesterday, as I think most, all of us did, and we were talking about the area being fungible. So I think the Little John Engineering Associates is amenable to just moving it. And I personally think that the kinds of form-based code things that we’re looking at make a lot of sense in the application that Mr. Delaney has described. So I think that, I think it would all fit, but I sort of would like to let them be the arbiters of that. So I think, I would suggest a three-part motion. The first one is, we take these information that he’s brought this evening and give it to both Little John Engineering Associates and the city manager. And the second is, we ask Little John Engineering Associates if they think it’s appropriate to add, and if so, we eagerly request that they do, if it fits in the scope of the contract, doesn’t increase the cost. And then finally, if it doesn’t for some reason, then we ask the city manager to give us a recommendation on how to, what the best way to facilitate the change he’s seeking, whether it’s a neighborhood application, or staff initiated process, or we can refer somebody to the plan board, et cetera. So the three parts are, give it to the city manager and Little John Engineering, ask Little John Engineering to include if practical. If not practical, ask the city manager for a recommendation to satisfy a similar end.
Second?
We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, can I just comment on this motion? There was a specific reference in the meeting that I had with the contractor that referenced the idea that there would be areas that are outside the boundary as provided, but which by logical extension, say they’re on the other side of the street, that makes sense to have rules on one side that are different than the other side. It strikes me that this is similar to that, that they’re gonna come up with characteristics or zoning suggestions for other parts of our community that would be totally relevant to this area. So I hope it would not increase the cost, honestly.
Yeah, I think that’s, I-
But it’s all the more important that it be gotten to them early, because this is kind of a special area, I think, as has been identified. And so for that reason, I would strongly support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Blackburn, is your light to the-
Commissioner Hawkins’ motion reflected anything I would say, which is a very good motion.
Okay. Any other discussion on the part of the city commission on this particular motion? Okay. Seeing none, we’re ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Okay. Next, I’ll go to the item with respect to the mayoral aide position. Actually, there’s not a lot new with this. This is actually something that, a situation that was put in place over a year ago, but where the occupant of the position had no benefits. And actually, we do have a period of time within the city that you’re supposed to, that you can’t exceed not having benefits. So benefits were provided, and there was the standard 2% raise that every other city employee got. And what, going back a little bit further, before I was even elected mayor, the city clerk and I had a discussion about mayoral staffing. The city clerk is the one that hires staff that works with the city commission. And we jointly actually came to an idea of a situation where the mayor would have a say, would be able to be consulted, in consultation with the city clerk, about who the occupant of that position might be. And a mayoral aide position is not something like another, like, let’s say, a clerical position in the mayor’s office. This is someone who is dealing with policy matters. And I felt that it was appropriate that this particular person be someone who I knew and trusted. I mean, I think the name was mentioned earlier, but like, actually, certainly, Ed Bratty wouldn’t be a suitable person for my mayoral aide.
J. Four, I think, was the other name.
Right, right. And so that is, that is actually what has occurred. This has all been run by the city attorney for legality, and he’s found it, even as, he’s a very conservative city attorney, but he found it to be in keeping with our city charter and policies. And what’s really kind of, I really am having a little bit of a hard time hearing some of these things, because actually, some of the individuals who came and spoke actually acted like, you know, this was fine. That actually, they liked having, they liked the situation, and it was known then what the process was. And actually, I had someone come into my office and sit down, and, well, actually, on the way in, they were talking about what a wonderful situation it was to have this position and to have this person in this position. They came into my office, they sat down, and even though it was a government building where it is illegal, they asked me for a political contribution for a particular candidate. I happened to be supporting a different candidate. Then the campaign unfolded, and as campaigns sometimes do, I guess, people get rubbed the wrong way. I did make comments in a newspaper, supporting the candidate that I supported. And then now, we have this situation. So basically, and also others that are speaking out happen to be affiliated with candidate in a different race that I did not support. So really, all I can think of is this is coming down to political retribution. And pure and simple. This was, try to put, this was put forward as an issue, frankly, during the campaign, but it did prove unsuccessful, apparently, because, actually, both candidates that I supported won. And going on further, when, we were talking earlier about how it’s good to see what other communities are doing, to come in contact with elected officials from other communities. And I do come in contact with a number of mayors in cities with council-manager forms of government. And they have mayoral aides. They do. And they actually have a role in selecting the mayoral aide, and it’s actually often not a competitive process. It’s someone that the mayor knew prior to being elected mayor. This is customary. So that’s really all I can think of to say at this time, but except that if this is what people are talking about, then there must not be much to complain about. Things must be in pretty good shape.
Does he have a say?
Actually, no, no, actually, you’ve, I can speak too. You’ve had your say, and now it’s my, now it’s my turn. Yes, Commissioner Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hear what you’re saying, but I think that you’re somewhat not hearing what the citizens are saying. And all they’re saying is, number one, that they want transparency. Number two, they wanted the position to be competitive. And I think there’s some information that maybe you should have shared, that you didn’t. And that initially, when this position came forth, there was wording in the description for this to be a competitive process. It was then sent to Audit and Finance, where the city commission directed staff to come up with the process. And in staff coming up with the process, they removed the competitive phrase out of the information because of them trying to come up with a description and a process pertaining to this particular position.
Actually, that’s, it’s not all correct.
Well, it’s in the memo, but, you know, but I’m not trying to get into argument with you, Mr. Mayor. All I’m just saying is that what we have experienced over the last year or two in that there has been an air of mistrust between the citizens and the city commission. The citizens also feel in some instances, we haven’t been also very forthcoming in certain issues, that whether you want to admit it or not, there is an angst between the citizens and us. And when, and you also have to keep in mind that this is something that’s new to the citizenry. They are having to get used to this, because the last mayor did not have an assistant. And so I don’t think that, in essence, you should kind of belittle the point by making reference to political races, because in the citizens that got up and expressed the way they felt, they didn’t bring any of that into the conversation, or they were- All they were expressing was that they wanted to see a competitive action in the process, and they want transparency, and that's what they were talking about. And I really feel that it was bad for you to reference political races, because they didn't talk to you about that when they made their presentation. And I do feel the citizens were very respectful to you in their comments. And as the elect of the officials, Mr. Mayor, it is incumbent upon us to be very sensitive to having open government and communicating with the citizenry. That is our job. That is what we are elected to do. And whether we agree with the citizens or not, it is always, it always behooves us to always be respectful and professional and not get petty. And your comments about the political races, to me, that was a little petty, because that didn't need to be a part of the conversation.
Well, I felt it was important to provide context.
But that wasn't in, but that context was not a part of what was presented to us in their comments. It really wasn't.
Well, sometimes I have to just call it like I see it. Commissioner Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, on another topic, I wanted to ask for a couple of things, and I'm, fortunately, I think some of the folks that had made this comment might have been here. But you want to...
Yeah.
Mine's on, on one of the other topics from the comment, from the citizen comment. I was hoping, first of all, to get a list of the names that were provided, and perhaps some identifying information about where they lived, who were memorialized by neighbors who came from the Coppers, from the Stephen Foster neighborhood. I was also wanting to ask, because I do recall this letter from the county requesting help, and I'm trying to recall if we didn't do a parallel letter at the same time. I think we did one time, but not another, and I'd be curious to if we either have a copy of the letter that the county sent that was referenced in comment tonight, or if the citizens in question could be asked to provide a copy, so we could just take a look at it, because it certainly, to me, never hurts to ask for additional help, notwithstanding where we think we are today. I do want to, just in response specifically to all the folks that were here tonight, I know a lot of you aren't here still, but perhaps for those who aren't from the Stephen Foster neighborhood predominantly. I totally have all respect for folks coming here and expressing it exactly as you said, Mr. Mayor, calling it as you see it. And I may not always share that, but to me, that isn't the point. I am a little concerned when it becomes a strong criticism of fellow neighbors in the same neighborhood, and people working on the same issue, who might not exactly have the same approach. And in this case, the folks that are involved with the art project, with the community visioning for the Stephen Foster neighborhood, I can't tell you, they are acting out of every bit of sincerity. And I, as I trust that you are, I really do. And I know that doesn't mean you'll always agree, but I would, I would ask, just as I, very sincerely, I believe all of the commissioners, listen with your comments with, with a great deal of respect, that we also respect our fellow neighbors, particularly people who are doing this on their own time, even if they maybe don't do exactly the way we agree with. I personally know that the Thomas Center has an art exhibit right now about the Stephen Foster neighborhood that is extremely compelling. And there have been people that have contributed incredibly interesting and informative pieces to that, and I hope people will go to the Thomas Center and see them. The whole point is for us not to forget that there are a whole layer of environmental injustice, social injustice that has taken place here. And we, it's very easy to forget that in our busy lives, where we, wherever we live, even if we live, you know, my district goes right up to 23rd Avenue, right across the street from your district, which includes the copper site. But many of us are, you know, we lose track of that connection. And I actually believe that the art project is not at all intended to obscure, even if that may be how it feels to some. It is absolutely sincere effort by neighbors to make a different future from what we've been given from the past. And so I just simply ask not to, not ask you to agree with what you don't agree, or don't say what you believe, but try not to critique fellow neighbors. Critique us, we're the elected ones. We're the policymakers. And while we certainly don't run the city, the professional staff do that. That's, that's what we were elected to do, to, to listen to the facts and give set policy, not to get into the minutia of managing the city. That, that wouldn't be appropriate. But that does not mean that we are not responsible for the policy setting and for the outcomes, though they may be less than what they should be.
No, no, actually, we...
Every opportunity for you to, I certainly, if not tonight, you know, you can get me with no problem, B., I promise. But anyhow, just those two things, I would very much like to have the names and any identifying information that was provided.
I know, I'm not asking you.
And, and a copy of the letter from either staff or perhaps the neighborhood. There was one other thing that I thought, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry if I can catch it. I would hope people will look at the vision for the neighborhood that's been developed, because I think every neighborhood needs that kind of a vision, no matter where you're starting from. And I think they're doing a very good job. Imperfect, sure, but it's a very noteworthy job. That's where I'm going to stop for the moment, and I might have more, Mr. Mayor, if there is an opportunity.
Commissioner Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Henry's discussion, and I, you know, I wasn't necessarily going to say anything, but I, and now it's even more difficult, because the gauntlet of politicism has been laid down. So what I will respectfully ask for is when the, I don't know, I'm new to this, when the appropriate waiting period is over, following an election, where we can have discussions and not have accusations of political, I would like to just look at the process. And we all received a memo today that was based on a question I had. And my concern in this entire issue primarily is that the city commission passed via consent agenda, an item with very specific direction, that came from the committee with very specific direction, and it makes entire sense that the direction was in creating these positions that were more professional in nature, that we would have a competitive process. And then that was removed prior to the May 5th meeting, which was the meeting before I took office, passed on consent. And my, my question for the integrity of our body is, how does that process work whereby which things that the commission specifically votes on are changed later? And I'm just trying to find out. So I need to readjust the level of detail that I give to the things that we pass that come back to us. So I'll leave it at that for now. And I think there are times in all of our lives when we face opportunities to do the right thing, and sometimes they are incredibly difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess just to comment on the process, actually, any, any proposal can be modified up until final action. And that's, that's basically, you know, I think what happened there.
Is that without, is that's with no discussion with the commissioners?
Well, the, the item was put on consent, and it read as it, as it, if, as it was stated, you know, as the proposal was there, and it was actually discussed in the Audit, Finance, and Legislative Committee.
Right. So the...
At length.
Okay. So the question, I guess, is, the question ultimately for me would be, okay, so at the time, I certainly was on the commission. So any commissioner that wanted to have a discussion about that or any other item has the prerogative to do that?
That is correct.
And therefore, so basically, the commission knew all this and just passed it through consent?
It'd be similar to the way you pulled an item from consent today for discussion.
Okay. Right, so...
Thank you. Commissioner Chase?
Thank you. The other, the other item I wanted to bring up tonight was hopefully a referral to the RUC. I spoke with Mr. Hunziger about this, I think, a week ago or so, and I, I sent an email out, I think, a few weeks, a couple, few weeks ago. And again, for anybody that has, has listened closely to me, pretty much my singular focus as it relates to the Greck Project is rates and rate impact and ideas we can have. So the email that I sent to recall was showing you what, what cities and utilities around the country are doing in terms of offering their customers green energy paying options or, or green, green energy programs, where, where we would offer, you know, all of the GRU customers, residential and business, an opportunity to voluntarily elect, voluntarily elect to pay an additional amount on their bills, either, either a fixed amount or per kilowatt hour amount. There's lots of options out there. There's, again, this is, if you, if you, and what I would ask is that we just, that we do, you know, do some research and come, the committee can maybe come to the commission with some ideas or some recommendations based on, on the research they do. Many, many good programs out there. Portland, General Electric, does a, does something called Green Source, where they, they offer different options. And it ranges, again, from just fixed money to actually buying your, you know, saying that I'm paying extra to actually get the renewable energy. And I think that what this would do is that, you know, clearly, we have a lot of, of citizens and businesses in town who, who have a strong feeling about the need for renewable energy. And so I think it would be, it would be appropriate for us at this point to look at these programs and potentially, ideally for me, we potentially have something we can talk about with the budget over the, over the summer, and implement this maybe starting in, even as early as fiscal 13, for, for a couple of reasons. The, you know, the one thing, I mean, just rough numbers going on, you know, if 10% of our 90,000 customers paid $10 a month, you know, that's a million dollars a year. And if you recall, you know, one of the decisions that we'll be making this year is either the elimination or the scaling back of the solar feed-in tariff program. And, and one of the reasons that GRU brought that as an option for us was it's, it's, it's money that was saving rates. And if I remember right, the, the number was like 300,000. So, so we could, we could do a lot of things with this. We could potentially help, you know, secure the future of the solar feed-in tariff by doing something like this. It would just be something that would go into the, the general mix. I don't know the requirements. I don't know if we're able to, you know, to, to, you know, save this money up over time and, and use it in the, the rate stabilization fund, or whatever it might be. But, but again, as I looked around and did my research, you know, I found, you know, countless community after community, you know, Portland, Austin, places in Michigan, Jersey, all that, that have a very robust green pay program. And, and I think that the time is now to start something like that for, for our customers, because, like I said, we have, clearly have customers who would, would support something like this. And so I would make a motion to refer to the, the RUC, the, looking into, I'll call it green energy, payment options for the, for the future for our utility.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to refer to the Regional Utilities Committee, premium for green energy, the people who pay. Anyone wish to speak to that particular motion? I will say that actually, we used to do this. It was called Groovreen. And it was actually, like, and sort of the amount of, of renewable was dependent upon the payment. And no one wanted, hardly anyone wanted to pay more. And so it actually was really not incentivizing good behavior, if you will. And so actually, that's, and we, we thought that actually, really, people shouldn't have to pay more to do the right thing. So that's why, actually, we felt that it should be spread across all of the rate payers. And that's, and actually, I still hold that viewpoint, but if there's some other, some, I don't know all of the other programs, so, you know, it's not...
Sure.
Something that I could totally rule out. Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Wells?
I didn't know if...
Oh, is that to that I have?
No, I had, I had a comment on this, but I didn't, I didn't know if Commissioner Botch...
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Wells?
I wanted to mention the specific reason why I said into this, because I've recently signed up for a very innovative nonprofit initiative in our community, where you have the opportunity to offset your carbon emissions. And, and, you know, I think Commissioner Shad, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but basically, the essence of it is, they will do an energy efficiency evaluation of your home. They will help you identify conservation measures that would improve your home. But then they will identify essentially, how much would it cost? And by making that contribution to them in a tax-exempt fashion, you're supporting their effort to encourage other citizens to, to do these kinds of evaluations of their homes. And they take a portion, I think half the funds, and invest those in doing this for free for low-income rental properties. And so it's a really great model. I think it's maybe, maybe the other one that Mr. Mayor, you were talking about, came along a little too early, or the way it was presented as a GRU initiative didn't work. And my hope would be that what was suggested here would not be limited to GRU, per se, but would also look at options that community members are already taking in this direction. I'm not holding my breath that if you don't do it right, that people are going to jump up and say, hey, by the way, I've got $10 burning a hole in my pocket. But I do think it's, that there, there are some different models out there that are, that are very enticing. And particularly since a lot of people are doing things like lead certifications, one of the requirements are to buy green power in order to get that certification. I do think this needs to be in our mix. And that's why I'm hoping that we'll encourage citizens to come forward with some good ideas. GRU, I know, already has some. I'm sure all of us might come up with some ideas, and particularly, how to make it, like you said, get over the problem that we had before. I believe this is a well worthwhile, community-wide effort. That's why I support many of the policies that we're doing through our utility, because it is something all of us have to be a part of. It can't just be a handful of folks sitting over here saying this is, feels good. But I do think this can be part of the mix, and that's why I encourage us to consider it.
Yeah. I guess at this point, since we do have, we will have biomass coming online, which is renewable, I mean, would we have some people paying for biomass, and then other people paying for coal?
And getting a discount for coal? Yeah.
That's, I mean...
Yeah, that would be kind of a ridiculous thing. I just think that it, the fact is, though, that there are people who are currently, by their own business decisions or personal decisions, looking to do something extra. And it's great. I would love if we could market that every customer is in fact getting one of these certificates by reality of the fact that our utility will be the best in the state, and therefore competitive nationwide in terms of offering renewable power. And I'd want to make sure that that's part of the discussion, because that fact is a great value that is very little understood and recognized. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else on this particular topic? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to the item? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Commissioner Chase, do you...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Botch?
Yeah, I think, oops. I'm glad that we're, we're kind of going down this, this conversational road, because it brings me to ask Commissioner Chase about his website that he announced, I, it was about a month ago, sometime last month, for economics. And I was curious as to why you wanted to go down this road instead of perhaps helping GRU enhance our website and the link that we have to renewable energy and specifically biomass.
Commissioner Chase?
Sure. Again, if you remember going back, I, there was another website that, that keeps getting promoted that I, that I think is, is opinion, and is, is not sponsored by the city or the GRU or anyone. And so I, I wanted to and still want, try to explain, I still think there's a tremendous amount of misunderstanding over, over the economics and potentially what that means, and how we as commissioners have to, to work the, the economics of the GRU and the general fund transfer and everything, how it all ties together. So, and I clearly, I, I finally put it all together that night when, you know, Commissioner Mastica made her point. I literally on the spot didn't know, I didn't understand what she meant, but I hadn't put anything up because of, you know, so it wouldn't, you know, be political or whatever the quote is these days. So I think it's important, just like any of us would do on any issue, that, that we try to get, or at least I think it's important, that, that just try to help educate people about what's, what's, what's happening. And now we can do it outside of the, the... of the, the realm of, of the other context that was going on. So-
Can I, let me kind of stop you here for a second. I think, I understand and I agree with wanting to get the information out there, wanting to be responsive to the public. I totally get that. What I don't get is why, as a commissioner, you have the ability and, you know, certainly the right to direct staff to say, hey, I don't think our website's doing the right thing. So let's work within the system that, that you got elected to do to, to enhance our website. Because doing a separate one, and I've, I've got it up here, and it's still just kind of like an introductory page.
Correct. Yep, yep. I didn't, I didn't put any up.
And by the way, I put my email in there and I haven't gotten any updates. So I guess it's still kind of in limbo. I don't understand why you're doing something completely separate and private when you have the ability to have, you know, the platform through GRU. And it's not so much, you know, I don't want to make it about you because it shouldn't be about you.
Absolutely.
You know, it's about getting the information out there. And so, so I'm not, I just don't get this. And one of the sentences in here, it says, about halfway down, it says, "It's our intention to educate the public on the situation we're facing." But this is a project by Todd Chase. So who is our intent? Who's, who's we?
Todd Chase and-
Well, let me ask you this way. How are you going to get the content for your website? Where is that going to come from?
So it's going to come from, you know, again, there's opinion websites out there that are, people are being driven to saying, you know, read this and you can get-
So this is an opinion piece, not a fact piece?
This is an opinion piece, not a-
Well, you're talking, you're saying, you're referencing a website that you consider opinion.
Right.
And we have a website, the GRU website, and with the biomass link and the renewable energy links, that, that I'm pretty confident, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Hunsinger would, would back this up, that is, is going to be, and it will be fact-based, no matter how much content we want to ask them to reveal.
Okay.
So, so what you've got here is you've got something that now it's sounding like you're trying to compete with what you consider a website that's opinion. So are you competing on an opinion basis or are you competing on fact?
I'm not competing with, with anyone. So, so if you're suggesting that, to go back to answer your question, because, because I think that many of my concerns have fallen on deaf ears. And so if you're suggesting that GRU will put on their website any kind of analysis that speaks beyond 1056 and the very change in assumptions and can give ranges and can allow the public to understand what a prepay is and the ramifications of it doesn't happen, if you can allow, if we can, if GRU would admit today that it is very likely we will sign power purchase agreements well below $130. And, and if they would put that on the website, I, that's fantastic. But I, I have not heard that. And so I, I'm living with what I think is, is, so when you say fact, you know, I don't know what any fact is. I mean, there's no facts in 1056. It's, it's, it's assumptions. And that's, that's fine. And so I've just tried to, I've tried-
And how they got there is on the website already. I mean, through, it's, and how, all the documentation is on there on the website where you can go to the links and call up the October RUC meeting where staff did their presentation. So how, how we got there or how GRU got there, it's, it's there. The information's already there. And-
Well, I'll give you a perfect example. So, so if, if, as I've said a couple of times, and I'm sure everybody appreciates and realizes this, but, you know, in the very likely scenario, well, I won't say very likely, in the realistic scenario that at some point in the next year, GRU has to approach the commission with an offer below 130. And let's say it's 100, which is, as I understand it, that's not quite the market. But, you know, we're going to have to make decisions that, that, that say, you know, we either got to go with that or we got to take the risk to, to pass that offer up. And, and no one is, no one is talking about that. And so, you know, ultimately, you know, what I want to do, and I've been, I've been very clear and I'll say it again, is that, you know, I hope at some point, if we're not successful with some of the things we're trying to do, to, to appeal to the principles of Grek, to work with us and work with our community and renegotiate this contract. That is, that is, I'll be very honest, that's very clearly, from my life and my experience, it's not an impossibility. It's not. So, so, you know, if you think about the, you know, the fixed nature of the pricing, I think that's a, that's good. That was originally good. See, so much focus has been on the past and how we got there. I haven't talked about the past. I'm talking about the future and where we are today. So, you know, if you took that fuel mix and you flipped it and you went variable in the beginning, you know, we can save potentially significant money in, in the short term. You know, if you, if you look at the different terms of the contract, we own the carbon credits, we own all the different things that, whether they're valuable or not, we'll never know. We got, we got to make a guess. We could renegotiate that. We can offer all upside to Grek. It's my, it's my hope that we can do something to, to, to change this contract. And so I don't think GRU, I don't think GRU, you know, at least on the surface, would do that. So, so I guess-
Well, let me ask you, have you asked? Have you tried to, you know, sit down and say, can we put this and why don't we do this? And, you know, let's go down this road?
Okay, that, I would be-
Because, because I'm getting, you know, because when I see, when I see things like this, as, as, you know, let's just say civilian or a consumer-
Yep.
-of information, that, you know, it's like, okay, how can I easily find out the information I'm looking for? That I have confidence that we can put the kind of information that you're talking about out there on, on our website, on the GRU website. I think we can do that. What I'm having trouble wrapping my head around is you're, you're going beyond and doing a lot of speculating, what about this? And we don't know about that. And how about this long, you know, into the future and so on and so forth. And so there's a lot of speculation and conjecture on your part as well. And it brings me back to, well, where are you getting, who's giving you your information if you're not getting it from GRU? And if you're getting it from GRU, then why don't we just use that, you know, that's already in place?
Absolutely.
Why are we recreating, why are you recreating the wheel?
Very good. So-
Reprinting the wheel here?
Yep. So I am getting-
And, and again, it's, it's, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, it's our intention to educate the public. Who is our? Is it just you or who is your research-
It's me and my dog. It's me and my dog and my children.
You know, your research, who's your research team?
Yes.
You know, is it Ozy and Media?
Yeah. You know, is this really going to get to this? Are you going to stoop to this level on this dais with me right now? This is unbelievable to me. Did you question Commissioner Hawkins when he formed his, what did he form, a PAC or whatever it is? What, he formed something to promote something you're interested in?
I haven't seen a website.
And that's the way you do it.
Did you, did you get?
I haven't seen a website.
Is, well, I'm not sure what the difference is. If it's public and it's going out, is it just the delivery of the information? I mean, I just, I don't understand.
I just think that we have-
And so you literally suggest that, that, I mean, GRU, so where am I getting my data is from GRU, from, from Mr. Hunsinger. We've had very, very good discussions. We have gone through scenarios.
Right.
I have run through scenarios that show the different levels of what we sell this power at and what the ramifications of that would be. If you're suggesting that GRU would put on their website that if we sell power at $100 for the first 10 years, that we'll, that we'll have to recoup $120 million, and they would put that on the website, that's great. But I don't think that they want to do that, and that's fine.
Have you had that conversation?
Yes. I mean, yeah, no, I'm sorry. Have I had the conversation that he would put that on the website? Is that what you asked?
Well, I, I think I'm asking Mr. Huns-
But I don't know what the question is. Because I don't want to say yes to a question I don't know. What did you ask? What specifically? Did I, did I ask?
I'm, I'm just wondering, the information that you think should be on the website, has the conversation been had with Mr. Hunsinger of whether or not that should go on and will it go on?
The GRU website?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
I have not.
So, so if it ain't broke, don't, you know, or if you don't know if it's broke, you see what I'm saying? I'm just, I'm just thinking, my thinking is this, Todd, is that we have, as commissioners, we have the ability to enhance the information that we put out there to the public through our website. I think we should use that.
Right. So, so you're saying that, so if I wanted some information to get out and it's, and, and GRU would not want to put that out, it would then be inappropriate that I put, put it out? Is that, I'm not sure what you're saying because, because I have had a discussion, I've had many discussions with, with Mr. Hunsinger. I have not asked him specifically, would you put on your website, would you put on your website and, and directly ask him and put it on my spot?
I mean, because it sounds like this would be a good referral to the RUC as well to say, you know, what can we do to get the information that is important, you know, to get out there? What can we do to get that out there? It's kind of like when, when, many months ago, when we were having the discussion about coppers and how people aren't real clear of what role does the city play, what role does the county play, and so on and so forth, that, that the city was able to say, okay, well, let's put together a website where people can go and find out this information. I'm just kind of thinking, well, we can do that with this. And why not?
Well, I have tried, I have tried. If you, if you recall, you know, when I was trying to give my presentation that I put together that I think is important, that I was, you know, it would, it would have been better apparently that I not do it, that it go to committee. You know, I was told at the time that this is all in committee. And, and I don't think that, I've looked at the agendas and I'm waiting to go to the meeting where this is going to come up again. There's, there's nothing, there's, there's no discussion going on at, at committee level that, that I'm aware of. So, so it is, and again, I don't know, I mean, if, I mean, I can make a motion right now. I move, I could make a motion that the commission wants to direct GRU to renegotiate the contract. My, maybe my assumption is, is that, maybe I'm assuming too much, that, that wouldn't pass. But, but I think that's a significant opportunity for us here. So we don't have to do some of the things we're doing. And, and, and I quite frankly think that that's, that's ultimately what we need to help us through this time. So, but, you know, I will, I will tell you that I'm shocked and I'm, and I'm saddened that, you know, on this dais, it's, it's interesting to watch. But we have effectively, for the most part, really not made it personal. And I've appreciated that. I struggled all week with a very important decision that, that I, that I made, and I think I made the right decision of whether, whether at this time, we should be talking about something or not. But to make this right now, personal and start talking about, you know, other companies and who may or may not help me, this is, you know, we need to move past that. And we need to, we need to understand, or at least maybe, I would ask you to understand my perspective. I'm a, I didn't, I didn't dream about being city commissioner for years. I didn't plan it. I haven't done things to make sure I could get it. I literally woke up one day and felt like that was the thing I needed to do. Okay? This is no game to me. I, I don't, I'm not planning the future. I don't know what I'll do in two years. But what I sure as heck won't do is sit back and just do nothing. And I firmly believe in this. The issue has been blurred every which way but up, but on, on all kinds of sides. You know, when I hear these things about personal this and that, I mean, this was a, certainly it's all a learning experience. I mean, the use of social media and the emails I've seen are just, it's just, it saddens me, quite frankly. But I am big enough to move past it and forget it. So I, I'm not sure the, the, the origin of why you would, you know, what I feel is very personally challenged me here on the dais. But, but I'm not going to stop. It never was political. It isn't political. It is just too important. You know, I struggle every week with, with, with my life, just like we all do. I put my mother in the hospital again this Tuesday and I struggle with it. You know, I watched my mother have her insurance rates go up. She's, she's dying over this stuff. It's killing her. You know, $500 now additional deductible for Social Security and her Medicare. And I know there's people struggling around this city. And I will wake up and go to bed every night knowing that I represent people like my mom and my mom cannot afford the, the rates that may be coming. So I will do everything I can, everything I can, for the next two and a half years to ensure that. And that's, I mean, that is with every fiber in my soul, every passion. So if it's political to others, great. You know, I will move on in the sunset someday. But, I mean, I am just, I'm pretty good. It's just, I mean, it's just stunning. So this is not, this is just, you know, I will certainly talk to Mr. Hunsinger and I will specifically ask him, and I will copy you all. This is what I think we should say. Okay? And, and if it's, if it took getting to February 29th to get everybody to say, oh, there's a problem, great, great. But, but I felt like day one, we have a problem. I don't care how we got there. I used the analogy last week and, and the mayor kind of took it the wrong way, but I just said, I'm not here to, to figure out what happened. I'm just here to, to, to go forward. And so that's important.
Okay, Todd, let me, I, I hear you. I understand exactly what you're saying and I respect your position. I do. And that's why I brought this up. And I, I don't want you to think I'm attacking you personally because this is why I'm saying we have a method to deal with this through, or, or to get the information out through our website. This, to me, sounds political. That's, that's what, you know, that's why I reacted to it. Because you're saying this is not political. This, to me, sounds like it's political because it's completely separate. Okay? And it's, and it says, you know, a website by Commissioner Todd Chase.
Yeah.
And so maybe it's just kind of my mindset versus yours that I see that we have, you know, a method to deal with this and, you know, I would like to give it that chance first.
Well, you know what, then, then some awakening has happened in the last few days because, because I have felt like that, that it's okay. I'm a big boy. I put the big boy pants on every day like we all do. So, but I didn't think I was being listened to. And that's fine. I mean, I don't mind it. So, and there's no textbook. I still, no one's given me the textbook yet of all the things I can and can't do. So I, I talked to, you know, some people that have been around. I followed, I've seen what, again, I, I appreciate what Commissioner Hawkins is doing. I mean, you know, whether I disagree or disagree with him, he's putting his money where his mouth is. And I felt like this was similar. I honestly do and did. And this is your second thing. I know you put a group together. You know, you've got people together and you took them out to Eugene and Portland and you've, you've tried to educate people. You know, you've put, to the point where I personally have sought out and gone and, and talked to David Coffey and met in his office. And I'm trying to understand this issue that is important to you. And, and I will tell you that I, that I feel like, that it wasn't, I wasn't being listened to. And that's fine. I don't, I don't mind it. So if something has happened where all of a sudden that I, I feel like I'm being listened to, then great. I just want the information out there. That's what I want. And the reason I want it out there is, and, and I won't repeat it again, but, but I am, in my life, I am convinced, and I want to be very clear because I said it once, Gainesville, Florida has an opportunity to, to show what renewable energy can be. We also have the opportunity to show how renewable energy can, can damage a community. It's out there. I mean, the possibility is out there. You know, it is March 1st, almost, I'm sorry, it's March 2nd almost. I have an aunt that turned 16 yesterday, by the way. But she's 64. And, I mean, but I, I still, I still submit that, that the, that my, my hope and my intention is, because I've heard, you know, for instance, I was excited about the, the stuff with the solar feed-in tariff that we learned yesterday. And I, and I just like, you know, that was, I had this vision, you know, when I, when I started that. And I, and I have this vision now. And I, I think that it's, I go back to why I'm doing what I'm doing. I don't, I don't care about 1056. I mean, I do care about 1056. I want it to be lower. But I want to make sure we're doing everything we can. And I just don't, I didn't feel like we are. You know, and when I say not from GRU's side, but just, just, you know, as a commission. So, you know, I've talked about the, the prepay. That worries me. It does. If we don't do the prepay, you guys have seen the numbers, there's 20, that's $16 off of that thing. That, that's $8 rate impact if we don't do that. That's not guaranteed. I mean, we, we're at the mercy of Grek on that. The, the selling of the power, there's, there's, it is more, it seems more likely than not, we will not sell this power at 130. That, that's, that's a reasonable statement. That's all I'll say. What's the number? I don't know. I think that, you know, and, and like you probably have done, like most of you have done, I've talked to Mr. Hunsinger. I, I don't want to say what Mr. Hunsinger has necessarily told me because I, because I, because he's talking to us and, as candid as he can at different times. But, you know, I just, it's realistic. So I'm just trying to be, you know, realistic. So, you know, I, I don't view this much differently than Commissioner Hawkins. But I do know that, I will tell you this. When I decided to get into this, you know, what I have now since learned game, I had no idea what I was getting into. I had no idea the different little, you know, groups and, and all this different stuff. And, you know what, it doesn't impact me. I'm going to continue, like I said, you know, you know, if, if you were with me this morning at 8 o'clock as I was going through, you know, payroll and billing for my company doing all this- my company, doing other things, I mean, I'm just, I'm going to continue to live my life. And I'm going to continue to live it with honor and integrity, and I'm going to continue to do everything I can to, to work with whoever we have in the commission respectfully. And, uh, and I just, I won't, uh, change that. And I, and I do feel I have to reflect on this later, because it's, like I said, I'm a little, I'm a little shocked. Actually, I'm a little parched, too. But, uh, you know, I just, uh, I, I really don't know what else to say, other than, you know, if, if the information can get out, eh, eh, great. I just don't know that it's, it's information that GRU would want to get out. And so, I think that it is my right, just as it's, you know, Commissioner Henry's right to have state of the, state of the district, I thought I was glad he knew people did that. That's a great idea. I'm going to copy that, by the way, so.
Actually, if I could just interject here.
So.
There, I mean, it's information that GRU wants to get out, and that, and that I think that they believe is accurate. There is also information that may be more opinion-based, that could be disseminated, that could actually interfere with GRU's ability to negotiate effectively with those that we seek to negotiate with. And that, that would be a concern of mine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I mean, I'd be happy to, I would be happy to, you know, come, come to the RUC meeting and, and talk, and we can continue this. But there's definitely, uh, been, been a misread here, and, uh, and that's fine. You know, I mean, I'll go on, but I just, uh, I will, uh, I will, uh, I will not put any data out, you know, and as, as much as you may or may not believe this, you know, I took what Commissioner Mastakas has said to heart. So, I think she called me out. She said this is, this is her feelings. Again, on the spot, I actually didn't know what she meant, so I didn't do a thing. As a matter of fact, I emailed Mr. Hunsinger, I think, twice, and said, I'm not doing anything until March. So, um, and I don't think there's anything to fear. I'm not, I'm not, you know, I will, I will tell you, quite frankly, if we can rally, you know, public support around, you know, creating a, an atmosphere in our community of, we want this to work, help us to, to GREC, then we will exert the pressures needed now, and the sooner we do it, the, the better, because, again, forget renegotiating, we are completely at their mercy on the prepay right now. Completely. And so, you know, it's, it's time, and it's, and again, my life has strained me, we, we can't wait. And that's been the, that's been my discomfort, is, is, is we're waiting. And, and maybe there's more, I know there's more going on there, but, you know, they're, they're, they're doing what they can, but the reality is, we're going to have to make some hard decisions, this commission, probably by the fall. And they're, and they're going to be, you know what? So, starting today, we can say, you know what, if we sell it at 100, because, because I'll tell you what we're not going to do. We're not going to not sell it. We're not going to stubbornly sit back and, but, I mean, we, but we're going to have to wait till the offer's high enough. But we're not, I mean, that's, so whatever it might be. And that's why, if you look at, I mean, if you paid attention, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say it that way, but if, if the public pays attention to the assumptions, there's one major assumption, which is, you know, we need to now sell 25 megawatts long, because again, you know, that 50 megawatts that we hold long right now is, is really what's creating, I think, the economic challenge. So, they're saying to us now, I know you wanted this 50 megawatts in 10 years, but we don't think we can do that. We need to sell this 25 megs long. And long might be 20, 30, 15 years, we don't know what it is, but that starts changing the dynamics of the policy. And then we're saying, we're going to take the other 25, we're going to have this blended, you know, rate that we're going to try to sell in a blended fashion. You know, we all think about different things. What really concerns me is the more, if, if we get in a position where because of dispatching other things, we're cycling down Deer Haven more often, I mean, it's, that's not good for the equipment. So, I mean, we just, there's just a lot of issues here that I think we need to continue to talk about.
It's very complex.
Absolutely.
It's very complex, and we have a professional staff that, this is what they do. This is what they do. I, I have, you know, confidence that GRU, you know, because they're professionals, because they've spent their careers doing this, that they understand all of this. It's new to us. It's new to us, but I have confidence that staff knows what they're doing.
I can, I mean, I, I've been in positions where I've had all the confidence in the world. Sometimes, I mean, we just, the world changes, and the world has changed on us.
Right. And that's, and that's why we have this process, that's why we have the RUC committee, and things can go from here to there, and there to here, for us to, to manage it as situations and the landscape changes. That's, you know, so.
Yep.
But anyway, we could, we could go on and, on and I.
I'd be happy to sit down with you at a public meeting. The thing that Commissioner Hawkins and I have done.
Or, or, you know, we can, depending upon what the next RUC agenda looks like, we could, you know, if it's light enough, we can certainly add it on for more discussion.
That's, that, that's fine, and I will assure you, and, and I think Mr. Hunsinger will at least vouch for this, is that I have been very candid with him. I have shared with him everything, all of my thoughts, all of my numbers, and, and I'm getting, I'm getting all of my numbers and my thoughts from, from GRU. And so, if you read anything, it will not be, the opinion part will be, okay, I think we might sell at 100. That's an opinion. But, I mean, but, but kind of the numbers are the numbers. And so, and, and I've been very clear with him, and very candid, and, and he's been very open. I mean, I've got some ideas beyond this on rates. We've got the budgets coming, we've got our three tiers, we've got all kinds of, of things going on, and, uh, and I'll continue to. And quite frankly, this is also, as we all get to pick, this has become, you know, certainly kind of one of my, one of the things I'm most interested in. And quite frankly, it's because I kind of like it, because it is, it feels like a business to me. Um, so, that's, that's what I've done.
All right. Well, are we done?
Okay.
Yeah.
Actually, that was interesting, so I appreciate it, but, uh, now we can move on. Commissioner Mastakas, okay.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll.
Okay. Actually, I have one item. I think it was indicated in a newspaper article that I would be meeting with the Chair Delaney of the County Commission, and we did have a very productive meeting. Actually, we've had two very productive meetings, and they have centered around the transportation sales tax. And I think the, we, it sort of headed down a course where we were going to be negotiating, that is, the City Commission, where we were going to be negotiating essentially for what our split would be. But Chair Delaney and I sort of arrived at perhaps what could, what could be an alternate approach, that we could try and see if it works, and if it doesn't, then we can go back to doing that. And that is that actually, we would develop a joint city-county list of projects that we would put together, put forward by, by both boards, should both boards agree to it. And that would actually be a much stronger statement to the public, and perhaps build greater confidence in the public, should the tax go forward and be put on the ballot. Uh, the, um, actually, we have started, started building a list. There's still more work to be done. I plan to meet with her again on, on Monday, and, and then continue doing this. I think, you know, this will probably take at least two more rounds, I would think, of, of discussion with her, and staff has been very involved as well, and been very helpful in helping us compile the lists. And it has a mix of modes of transportation in the list so far, and I think that we'll continue to build on it in that fashion. And so, if, what I would foresee, unless the commission rules it out, you know, at this point, would be that actually, we would, that we would develop, the Chair and I would develop this list, and then present it back to our commissions, and if it's not found to be, if it's found to be accessible, acceptable, then we would move forward with it. If it is not, then we would go back to where we were before. But this actually could, actually maybe even save time and save angst, and commissions pounding their fists together, and, and get something that, if both commissions agree to one list that is, that is blended together, then I think that may be something that is a powerful statement to the public. Commissioner Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for taking the, the time and the initiative to do that. It sounds similar to the sort of idea I suggested, that we use the MTPO list, because it has the benefits that you described. So, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
We've got a couple of meetings left, so you, you said you would have a couple of meetings left with Commissioner Delaney.
Yeah, I would say, you know, probably, I would, I would say at least two. We may be able to knock it out in one, but I, I doubt it.
And the goal is to have that in enough time, that we can consider that in advance of the March 29th joint meeting?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And then, so another question is, would, would we, would this be sort of an 11th slice of the pie kind of piece? Or would this be a big pool that'd be 80 or 90% of the surtax revenue spent on it, that includes county resurfacing, the current city projects, and some new spread of projects that we've added through direct conversation with the county? And something like, like that latter, or more like the latter?
Well, it's, it would actually, the, the other municipalities would not be impacted by it. They would, they would get whatever share that has been worked out with the county. But essentially, what we'd be doing is taking the city's share and the county's share as one, and then, and then essentially developing a project list that is in the interests of both the city and the county. And it would also appeal to a broad, a broad spectrum of, of users countywide, and to, that's, that's sort of the idea.
Okay. I like that approach. Has there been any suggestion that we take out projects that are currently in our list? Or is this all about adding something new?
Well, actually, with respect to our list, I mean, we've, well, what we're doing is, if anything is, that is taken out, is because there aren't the funds to cover it, basically.
Okay.
Right. I mean, our list is too long for us to really be able to pay for.
Yes, yeah.
And so, so there is a prioritization of, of our list, in terms of large projects, and then some small projects. And, for example, Southeast 4th Street could be a possible thing to go on that list. The.
I hope it's a definite thing to go on the list.
I'm sure, I'm sure you do, but it's not, it's, we haven't gotten to the, to the smaller thing, to the, to the smaller one yet, but we will. Actually, that one's not that small, as I now remember. But yet, the, so, but actually, I guess what you'd say, the more local, the more local streets.
Well, I, I'll just give some generic thoughts, in terms of what we have, and how cost feasible they may be, and what I think projects are that would be seated with voters. I think, I think the BRT blue line is of the utmost significance, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't, we need to keep that in there.
That's one of the first things to plan.
All right, great. The other two BRT lines, I think, might, might be most practical to fund outside the timeline of this proposal. I, I would support them in there, but I would also be willing to have a conversation on taking them out. If we're talking about adding facilities, I'd look at some of the, the one new capacity project that's on the MTPO list, that's not on the city or the county's list, is Hall Road. I think that matters a lot. I, I just, frankly, if I lived in, in that, if I lived in the part of the community that commuted through that, through the urban village area to get to Gainesville every day, and that would be sort of a no-brainer, and there's a lot, a lot of people in that position. And then lastly, we, we, we had our previous conversations about this. I was actually stunned we didn't bring up any conversations about the urban circulator funding, because that's, was a larger line item than the, the BRT lines combined. And I'd be very open to discussions that maybe the amount that we have that funded is not the right amount, but I want to be sure that that stays in there, so that there's some funding that comes to start an alternatives analysis, so that we can get a better handle on what that is. So, um, I'd be more, very open to talking about changing the amount of funding we've been discussing, but want to be sure we still recognize that's a project that's, that's worthy of learning more about, and recognizing that learning is going to take money.
Right. And I think what, a part of the, the thought is that there are projects that happen to be in the city limits, but are of countywide impact. For example, Northwest 60 Second, or, Southwest 62nd Boulevard, say, the portion between 20th Avenue and, and Newberry Road, that would be, that would be another example. And, um, so, as far as the, the circulator, that's, yeah, that part, I think we haven't, we haven't gotten down to discussing the circulator.
Well, I'm glad I brought it up before you got there.
Right, right. Okay. But I think actually, but I think part of what we want to do, though, is, is actually, part of the approach that we've looked at so far is not act, is to actually do things that would actually result in getting the, getting the project done, really. So, actually, doing a feasibility study may not be the, or, or, may not be the, what we would go to. Then instead, like, if we could, you know, maybe perhaps an allocation to a federal match for a project, but, but not, not something where it would only be a study.
Okay. Well, I think you sort of hear my sentiment.
Sure.
So, I'm, 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 I'm sure I'll trust, direction you take.
Thank you. And again, the list will come back for, for consideration by the commission. Commissioner Henry.
Yeah, well, I just want to add my sentiment as well, in that I do think Southeast 4th Street is an important project that definitely should be included, because that is a very key north-south thoroughfare coming from downtown going to Williston Road. Secondly, it is a road that, for decades, the residents of that area have been waiting for it to be upgraded. Thirdly, it is a very good connector, as we look at our Depot Park project as well.
I've been a long supporter of Southeast 4th Street.
Yeah, yeah, and I want you to continue to support it.
Sure, I would.
That's why I'm making my case. But anyway, the other thing, too, again, BRT is fine, and I will support some degree of it, but I will go on record to say that I don't want that to, to dominate at all costs other local road, uh, needs that can take place also. And I just want us to be balanced in how, in, in our approach as well. Um, I, I also want the operations part of our plan to stay in there, because that's important to my district. RTS will be able to improve upon some routes in East Gainesville with the operations dollars. And so, um, that is very important to, not only to me personally, but to my constituency as well.
All right.
So.
Thank you, Commissioner Henry. Commissioner Chase.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the opening part of that. Did you say that you and Commissioner Delaney were going to be meeting, or?
We, we have been meeting.
And is that, I, I, that's kind of a question, maybe point of order for the, maybe attorney or someone, but, um, I mean, you couldn't discuss any MTPO list projects together?
Well, we couldn't advocate for, since, since we're not speaking as the MTPO, we're talking about a joint city-county, uh, transportation, we wouldn't be talking about an action to take at the MTPO.
We could, we could talk about transit issues with the different issues that may may or may not be on the list or something? Okay. And you're going to bring that back to us, the list?
Yes, yes, oh, of course, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, sounds good. And I may, I'm not sure, but I may be launching a website called BRTonomics at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chase.
It's your site, not our site.
Right, exactly. Okay. Signal more lights for commission comment. Now, we're at the citizen comment portion. Any citizen wish to speak to the City Commission, come forward at its time.
Whoops. Sorry. First of all, Joe Beatty again. I would like to thank Commissioner Henry for his words earlier after citizens' comments. I would like to thank Commissioner Henry for his words earlier after Citizens' comments. I think you spoke very well for expressing how the citizens feel, and I think that you showed us the respect and that, that we expected the Commission all along, and I really appreciate that. The other thing is, this conversation just now kind of stuns me and makes me think about a lot of things. For well over two years, citizens have been coming before you and wanting to discuss other, maybe interpretations, and discuss what you're all terming opinion on the biomass, but a lot of people have done a lot of research, and sometimes when you get numbers, some people do modeling one way and do figuring, and other people look at it another way. And so the Commission seems to me like when somebody goes and tells a very responsible parent that their child did something wrong, and you know that parent really wants them to do the right thing, and all of a sudden, it's like, oh, no, my, my Johnny wouldn't do that. And, and the parent gets defensive, and you become, you know, the bad messenger. And it seems here, when we're trying to talk about what's going on with GRU, another way of looking at this contract, the way things have happened, it almost seems like you've, like, circled the wagons. GRU is the experts, we trust them, and that, a lot of times, people get two different opinions. And never in this process do I feel, and many others also share the sentiment, that the City Commission was really looking out for what was best for the citizens. It seems early on, GRU and the private company joined as partners, and I think that the oversight and the fiduciary responsibility you all had to protect us, the ratepayers, and to look at this from some different perspectives and listen to the citizens, we became vilified. You know, we're crazy and all that, rather than having a nice, respectful conversation and say, wait, maybe there is another way to look at this. Are we doing the right thing? So I would just leave you with those sentiments. Also, I would like to know tonight, do we have any contracts in place to sell this at the, at the contractually obligated price, which is 130 megawatts per hour is a figure that we all agree on? That's question number one. I'd like an answer. Question number two is, will we be forced to sell this below, at a substantial loss to the GRU ratepayers?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. I would like answers to those. Thank you.
Next speaker? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Mario Perez, and I just wanted, I was home watching the, the discussion, and I figured I had to come and, and tell you all. And the more opinions than there are, and the more information than we have, if Mr. Chase wants to set up that committee that he was talking about, and I didn't hear the whole thing, then he should be allowed to set up that, that website that he wanted to set up. What I see is, somebody all of a sudden presents a different option, and now we try to, to shut him down. We now, we want to say, the only people that can come out with these figures is GRU. But there are other people that have as much resources and probably as much knowledge and as much intelligence to go ahead and come out with different alternatives. And I think it behooves the Commissioners to listen to other alternatives. Forget what happened in the past, just like he said. Move from here on. The situation has changed. The price of gas has changed. Different things change. We need to move on with that. And I admire this man, and I just couldn't stay home and not come over and say that. Thank you so much.
Thank you for comments. Next speaker? Anyone else wish to speak to the City Commission? Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on the Citizen comment? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Rob Brinkman, as you know. You know, I, I think it's worth noting that we've had elections for the last three years where candidates ran on an anti-biomass platform. And for three years running, those candidates have lost. Plain and simple. Now, I understand everybody's got their opinion, and they're certainly entitled to their opinions, but there is a basis of fact. And facts are demonstrable with evidence and mathematics, numbers, empirical evidence. And the fact of the matter is, despite people's claims that the rate impact will be higher than 1056, and I got to say, that's 1056 per thousand kilowatt hours. The average GRU customer uses 870. At that figure, and I know some people laugh at that, but that's the facts. That's the mathematical reality. Some people may use 2,500 kilowatt hours, but some people use far less than even 870. The average is 870. And at 870, the one penny a kilowatt hour rate impact actually works out to $9.19. And at 870, if you reduced your usage 15%, you would fall down into the second tier. So your, the rate impact of the biomass plant will be one cent, but if you fall down into that second tier, you save 3.4 cents, according to the GRU rate structure. So you're two and a half cents ahead, 2.4 cents ahead. You know, I can't believe that we signed a contract almost three years ago, three years ago in May. By the time the new Commissioners take their seat, it will have been three years, and people still expect, while the plant is being built, that we're going to change horses in midstream. Yes, natural gas is a lot cheaper. That means it affects the market for selling it. But you know what? It also means we could just keep all 100 megawatts. We could take advantage of the low gas prices, and we could use our coal plant, which, you know, per unit of energy required, biomass is actually going to be cheaper than.
A little bit away from the mic.
Biomass is actually going to be.
Other mic, maybe.
A little bit cheaper than coal. So the fact of the matter is.
Actually, that one's not on.
So the fact of the matter is, there we go, that it's not going to be the doomsday that people are trying to tell us it is. People are trying to tell us it's doomsday for political advantage. People have nothing to worry about. It's not going to be a disaster. It is renewable energy. That is the policy of this City Commission, to invest in that.
Commissioner Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, because I think it's completely relevant to this conversation. You know, I, I believe every person up here is appreciative of the citizens and the voters, and in particular, the candidates who step forward and put themselves out there, and that, win or lose. And I am. Now, does that mean I always think it's great what I hear and that they're all saying things I agree with? Absolutely not. But we would, I don't think any one of us up would be up here, Todd, and that certainly applies to me, but I think everybody here, if we didn't value citizen input, and in fact, I've been going around saying this a little bit of late, more often than not, our decisions don't have as much citizen input as we'd like. I think a lot of the time, we don't have hardly anybody say anything to us. And we could use a broader and deeper engagement. That is not one in which somebody is always exercised. Sometimes it is. You know, I get kind of exercised. Somebody told me I had steam coming out of my ears on the bike path the other day. And I mean, here on the dais, talking about the bike path with you. That doesn't always happen. Kumbaya, is that what it is? Okay, man, you did it. Okay. But what I'm saying is, I think you're on to something here. I think, thank you, Susan, very much for following through on that question, because I felt like you were getting at something that was very valuable, even if it wasn't, I don't know, both of you thought you weren't receiving it, but I think at the end of the day, I heard some real valuable conversation. I want to say thank you for that. I think the idea of scenarios is, that is a challenge, because part of the question is, what do you put out here? Like, you know, we're talking about, and what do you try to work with through our staff? The fact is, we can't do anything effectively without the cooperation and progress of our staff. Doesn't mean that I only depend on the staff for information or inspiration or ideas. But citizens need to know that every person up here takes that responsibility seriously, and every one of us is going to answer for how this comes out at the end. And whatever anybody else says, this all will reconcile, and we'll know in five years' time, in 10 years' time, and so forth, exactly what the reality was. That's when the facts will be there. In the meantime, we're trying to make policy, and you can't drive in the rearview mirror. This, this contract was signed a full year before I came on to this Commission, right? Maybe a little bit more, actually. I believe it's the right policy for a lot of reasons, but I totally acknowledge that things have changed since then. By God, who couldn't think of that? Including gas, natural gas prices. Does that mean that we just go and, Saturday was a bunch of idiots who did it before, and they obviously were a bunch of bums, and, okay, we're just, or do we pretend that we're not responsible for taking what we were given and doing the best we can? I could have done either, I suppose. I mean, I, nothing to stop me from saying they were a bunch of bums. The reality is, that isn't responsible, even if I really thought that, you know? And I think that's the approach that I hear mostly from what Todd says. And I believe absolutely, I mean, Susan, you're brand new to the Commission. She doesn't have to take the view that we're going to work and make this as good as possible. Look, politics are politics. People are going to get, use whatever advantage they think they can within reason. I think people hopefully will be ethical, not always, right? But we do have to come together at the end of the day and then spend at least a little time trying to work together as just citizens and citizens. And I don't know or care who voted for who. That's a hard job to do. And I swear to God, I, sorry, I shouldn't do that. That's a real bad thing to do. I really promise that I'm going to work on that, and I believe every person up here that I've worked with, as a citizen before I was a Commissioner and since I've been a Commissioner, and that includes you, Todd, as well as the professionals up here, have the best interest of the city at heart. I really believe that. I wouldn't be doing this if I didn't. And I wouldn't go around flacking for Gainesville just for the heck of it. I could be anywhere else that I wanted to be if my wife and I didn't have to be here. So, and that's true for all of us. You know, we could be somewhere else. We're not. There's a reason. And it's not because we hate each other and we just love to combat and to scream at each other. Not even Mr. Davies really feels that way. I've talked to him outside of Commission chambers. He's a wonderful fellow. He's got some really cool stories. But the reality is, we get into a certain prism and we get into a, sort of a logic that says we're enemies, because we disagree. We aren't enemies. We're citizens and neighbors that share a common future. And we will only work those things out if we don't forget that we disagree, don't refuse to disagree. No, no, that's not what, but that we keep our eyes on the prize. And I think we're doing that. And everybody that's in the room tonight has a role in that, wherever you were on Tuesday night. And I think what happened with Satchels is proof of that. That was more important than what happened on Tuesday, that people came out and helped him. And what he is doing out there in that location, and that's, there's thousands of other stories like that that I don't even know about, having been here eight years or nine years. So, I, you know, I don't know. Maybe that doesn't mean anything. That sounds like kumbaya or whatever, but I think it means something. And I think the fact that you were willing to come down here tonight and say what you said, and, you know, Rob, you're always here, so obviously you don't have anywhere else better to be. But Mr. Perez, you know, I think you share that, because that's why you came down here, and I really appreciate that, even though you were complimenting him and not me.
Mr. Wells, are you?
Yeah, I'll shut up. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do think that there are things we can do better, you know, including things that, you know, just since I've made. I don't think that's a crime to have to say that, and I don't think it also means that we need to make enemies of one another to do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and Commissioner Chase, you don't need to match a minute for me.
I won't. Actually, we're going to go to Satchels later, so. I, I think it's, it is for me, because, because again, I'm, it's uncanny how the meetings end quite often, but I just, it's important to note that, that this, this comes from, from, from everywhere. So, I mean, there, there is no, you know, I don't know what a statement of fact really is, but, but here's what I know. I know that numbers can be used in a number of ways. And so I represent, obviously, a group that's different, and that's okay. I would encourage everyone to go, the City Commission years ago, unbeknownst to them, I think, have created an amazing tool. It's called GainesvilleGreen.com. You should go to GainesvilleGreen.com and your neighborhood. It will show all the houses in your neighborhood. If you have a red dot on your house, you are paying the highest utility rates in the state, because you're using around $1,500 kilowatts or more. Now, I'm not making that up. I did the research. It's on PublicPower.com. As you continue to use power at around the 1,500 kilowatt hours a month level, our rates are the high, they're actually about a dollar within Key Wests, but at around, at 2,000, it goes higher. The reason I think that's important is because I hear the average user, and again, it's how you get there. I mean, is it gas users combined with the other users? Who are all the users? But what I think is important, if you go to this website and you see the sea of red that you'll see, there's a sea of red in neighborhoods on the east side. What's fascinating to me is, in my neighborhood, the red dots all have one thing in common. It's uncanny. It's the thing called children. They have children in the house. They have multiple people. In my house, five people. Six right now. My mother-in-law's here. And so, I mean, we use, we use more power, but the, the numbers are the numbers, and that's the kind of thing, it's, it's, it is what it is. So, you know, at some point, you know, some people, it's true, some people, we have, at the lowest we have is, if you're at 500, we're 15th out of 20, if you use 500 kilowatts, and we start rising from there. The important thing is, is all these policies work together. And ultimately, what we end up doing is if we force kind of conservation with the high-rate payers, then it kind of circles back and gets us, we had this discussion, kind of like the water. I mean, the more we conserve, at some point, the rates will go up more, but we're, and that's, which is fine. So these are the broad discussions that I, that I look forward to having in the budget session. Obviously, we came into it late last year, but, but I, but I think sometimes it's, and I'm glad that we're all here, and I'm glad that I'm here, and it's, it's, they are different points of view, and they're critically important, and, and we represent all kinds of people. And I'm proud to be here, and I'm happy to be here, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you for your comments. This meeting is adjourned.